We're live.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to council Monday, October twenty third, two thousand and twenty three. Call me tour at four P M. I'll remind everybody to turn off their electronic devices, put them into vibrate silent mode. Any additions or additions to the agenda?
The close meeting of worship, item sixteen, title of the council.
Okay, noted. Anything else? I'll give a quick verbal update on the Caribou sessions I attended with the M N R F on Wednesday, Thursday, Thunder Bay, as well as we had an opportunity to be with an awesome president, Dr. Burnout, in regards to the medical school. So give a quick verbal on those things. Anybody else? Okay. Here and then I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Tuesday, October twenty third, two thousand and twenty three, regular media council survey amended. Move by. Absolutely, same with council balance. Any questions? Very none. Call question on favor. Very thanks. Any disclosure of interest? Hearing that. I do have a motion that council hereby does the regular media council held on Monday, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, a circular amended. Move by. As a Suki, same by council balance. Any questions, errors or omissions in those minutes? Hearing none. Call question on favor. Very, thank you. Okay, tonight we have a special, special event happening. Of course, every year we do this around September, October, when we get student counselors signed up for Marathon Municipal Council. And tonight we have two great young men working from the high school going to join us today. So Mr. Scorch is going to take the opportunity to swear them in, whether than we just sworn in and we'll ask each one of them to come up and one at a time or together.
One at a time. So go and have a better order. So I'll ask for an empty to come forward in front of council with your oath. And just recite your oath. And once you're complete, put it in the recitation, we'll sign off.
I and MP Keshan have been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon. Do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third. And I make this solemn promise and declaration
Conscientiously.
Conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under or.
You'll sign right here. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Now, I saw her to come up and recite his oath, please.
I, Sir Redden, have been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon. I do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly and faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the Majesty, King Charles the Third. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effects as if made under oath.
Congratulations. Yeah, you got.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome aboard.
Can I get a picture of the mayor with the counselors for our students?
In the middle of it. Are we all going in this? Yeah, actually. Just you know, through the. We'll get the other tall guy here.
Stand beside him. I'm going to this side. Oh, this no matter.
Brad's good. Congratulations.
Good to have you aboard. It's gonna be good.
Five years ago, actually last night, I got sworn in. It was the election number twenty.
You're a little nervous?
Five years.
I don't went by that. I remember it canceled the Lucy saying, now the war come up from three to turn to a four year term. That's going to take so long. Reality four years goes by like really quick. Okay, up next, the council report. So just a verbal report on my attendance. That's.
Sorry, your worship.
It's okay. Okay, good. Once again, welcome. And you guys are up right after I for some student council reports. Thank you. What you want to say and share with us? That'd be awesome. So I had the opportunity to attend on a roundtable discussion around the Caribou Conservation of Woodlands Caribou of Ontario, working with the federal government, the Species at Risk Act. This was attended by many different people throughout the province, scientists, industry, municipal, federal, provincial employees. It was really a good session, but the reality is, I think that they were looking for guidance at this meeting. We had many breakout sessions throughout the two days to talk about what the impacts were for the discontinuous zone, which is the zone that we are affected by mostly, which is Lake Spirit Coastal Range. And there's this continuous zone goes up to the continuous zone, which is above the fiftieth parallel, basically of the Kena geography wise, the Kena Geralton area of Greenstone. So after the day and a half or so, our working group made recommendation. And I think that was why I was more satisfied with that as well, working with our First Nations neighbors who want to grow the birds on the Mishmukon and the State Islands. And then if those birds grow to a number where they're transportable, to transport them to the fiftieth parallel, the continuous zone up in Northern Ontario where they survive. They do well up there. They don't do well in the discontinuous zone, which is the coastal range. If you look on the map, it's literally, I have a map here and you can look at the coastal range. So here's the all the white here is all the discontinuous zone. There's a lot of areas where it's mostly most populated. So the newest trappers, scientists, like I say, biologists, oristers, miners, that all understood and said, that's probably the best recommendation. That was the recommendation from our working group. Whether that gets implemented as part of the overall plan, that's another question. So that after the sessions, they will put all the reports together because there was six working groups within the two days. They'll put all those informations together and then submit them back and have us to have an opportunity to have comment on their report. Their report will then go with the federal government. I think they have to have final plan by the spring of twenty four for the species at risk for the federal government. So we'll see what comes. Interesting stuff. Made a lot of great comments about the impact would have locally on the economics, the future of our whole region, as well as the people who live within it. And we're the ones who pay the price for somebody who's making rules in Southern Ontario, or for that matter, in Ottawa, or B C, or New Zealand. And everybody has the opportunity to make comment on that Species at Risk Act. So that's a frustrating thing, but that's process. So it was well attended and I'm glad I had the opportunity to speak on behalf of the community as well as as Noma. And also right on Thursday, we had an opportunity to meet with the Nausicaä president to talk about the impact of Northern Ontario and the docks. And Dr. Newberry reached out to me and Mrs. Korchinsky about how we could have some more information shared about how the the impact of rural medicine is impacting all of Ontario, not just Northwest, but all of Ontario. And so we asked the Northern Policy Institute to work with Dr. Newberry as well as the medical school. Medical school's gone through its own struggles with financial situations. They, as you know, they're now an independent university. So that comes with bigger price tags and operating costs and staff. So she did assure us that, like the Verma said, that she would continue to focus on northern admittance, northern students, northern locations. But here's the one big kicker that I didn't realize that what really happens is that when students get into their residency programs, nobody's taken it. There's no working hospitals. Other than Marathon's, one can always a big one in Northwest, one in the Northeast, the rest are in Southern Ontario, whereas they're going to do their training and resumes within those hospitals because doctors take them. The other docs are not, not have enough staff and both nursing and physicians to train those docs. So that's a real problem. How that's going to get fixed, it's not up to the university. It's up to the individual communities and hospitals, but we're all struggling in that regard. So we'll continue to focus on that. The Policy Institute is going to write a paper for us to bring to Roma. It won't be a full paper, but it'll be a paper understanding the impact of rural medicine in Ontario. So we'll get some traction there. It's not just a marathon. Marathon's actually in really good condition compared to our, a lot of our neighbors. It's a real problem all throughout the province, probably also the country for that matter, as we all hear on T V all the time with nursing and physician problems. And nobody wants to go into family practice. That's one of the biggest problem. Everybody goes into medical schools and they go on to specialized focus area because they don't want to deal with, believe it or not, multiple things coming into the hospital at the more into the clinic. We want to focus on one thing. So I mean, Dr. Sukie knows, you know, he's focusing on one thing, but that's in a different field. But the reality is, it's easier to focus on one than many things in a family practice. And with that comes family health here. So all of that, we're getting some traction. Hopefully that some results come and we'll have the opportunity to discuss, like partly agenda today is about the attendance in Roma as well. Well, we can maybe meet with the Minister of Health and through Noma and with the municipality and Dr. Newberry as well. Maybe we can even reach out and see if she'll, she'll attend if we do get a meeting with Minister of Health to discuss that very, very thing. Questions?
Is there still incentives for the state local?
Yes, there is. And we did, we did talk about that at length with Dr. Verma. And so the northern allowance is about one hundred and eighteen thousand, one seventeen four roughly, but it's front end mode. So if you come to Doc and Marathon, you get forty percent of that money upfront the first year. We were asking them to focus on that. We'll bring that to the government to bring that to the backend. So that the first year you get ten, the second twenty, thirty, so on. So then you build a relationship within the community, right? So that's, that's problem.
Yeah. And I also think what the other end of it is how you grow doctors in your own or healthcare professionals in your own neighborhood. So I know Nausicaä is running Camp Med, which is a one week program in Lakehead for high school kids. I think they're looking for grade ten and eleven to see if it's for them. So maybe for our student counselors, we could bring that back to the high school and promote that. We had three students go last year, but I think one of the things we don't do is promote our kids and give them the tools they need to see if maybe that's a career for them.
Well, Mr. Redd is here today as well. His name was mentioned. I'm reading about how wonderful Marathon is and providing that opportunity for docs to come and visit small rural Ontario and see if they were willing to practice here. That's great, but not everybody has that. And a lot now is having suppliers are pitting against each other by offering more incentives, which is beyond where you should be. You shouldn't be giving away money on top of money that's already received from federal, I mean, provincial governments and the wages. But that's what's happening, whether it's it's through housing or incentive by vehicles or a bonus. So that's happening. So.
I know that this is where it is going to better, but the Confederation College and they kind of partnered up with that nursing program and then we'll get like their tuition repaid.
Stay and learn.
Yeah, that's a condition to stay.
Stay and learn program two years. So we did talk about that as well. And through health summit that I attended in two thousand and eighteen, I talked about that. And Dr. Verma is excited about that, but it's about traction. Is offering a program. So a student wants to went to med via doc, maybe a voluntary program saying, hey, we'll pay all your tuition, but you stay and learn, you stay in practice in the community. We put you for, for the duration of the payback time, whatever that might equal, four or five years. So it has to be, everybody has to be on the same page. And that's where we bring it with Dr. Newberry and to the government, maybe in January. Say, is there an opportunity to take that northern incentive grant? Maybe more getting put into the tuition program. This doctor, be a doc, it's quite expensive. I didn't realize it was that expensive. So if you can offer a program where a student could come out with no debt, but yet has to go to Red Lake or Marathon or Super goat or Armstrong, or wherever that might be, to practice, to pay that debt down.
Yeah, just my, to be our best strategy would be focusing on the homegrown talent, having them go away and doing our best to have them come back, right? And those individuals who are already accustomed to the northern, Northwestern Ontario living love Marathon, all that kind of stuff, just having a magnet to bring them back to the community once they're educated and ready to start their professional career.
Absolutely. So two, two quick points I'll make before we close up. They, we had an individual from Shriver, an individual Red Rock have both applied, one, three times, one, four times, both refused. The third, the individual Red Rock just got accepted this year. Individual for Shriver, I spoke to her last night again. She's reapplied, hopefully gets accepted. She's going to be a chiropractor right now. So we asked them to change your acceptance process because it's about human rights and what you can and can't ask in regards to students application process. So one thing we suggested was maybe when you're talking to a student and you're asking, tell us about your town. Because what's happening is there are people, believe it or not, running, working around a system and getting an address in a community in Northern Ontario, but don't live in, never lived in Northern Ontario. That's happening, right? And I'm sorry to say, but, and it's hard for the university to weed that out. So we asked if they can put in their application process, a question saying clearly, tell us about your hometown, wherever that might be. And that way there's not against human rights. It's not, it's not inquiring as to where your location and how long you live there. Just tell us about your community. She can pinpoint from the answers that individual give you about. So when I told the individual last night from Shriver, she was really excited about that because that, you know, she grew up and raised in Shriver and wants to go back and practice in Shriver Terrace Bay. So they, she would obviously tell you exactly what's happened to her community or the like for, for growing up and volunteering and involvement or whatever. But if somebody comes from Southern Ontario and has a box number in Marathon, might only be here a period, sure period of time, doesn't really know anything about the community. So how do you, how do you answer that question? So it's just one of those things, right?
Bringing a moose having.
Various things, right? So all good. Hopefully we get some traction. We'll talk about that aroma and hopefully with maybe Dr. Newberry and Northern Voltsians too will identify some of those things. Okay, up next, do council report. So we'll go with, with Counselor Keshan right off the bat, if you don't mind.
So our Falcons are reaching their latter half of the first sports season as we're hosting the Terrace Bay for a home sports day tomorrow. And we're leaving to Mantua for in a way sports day on Thursday. And it's just, I think it's our last two regular season games until the playoffs start.
Council Lake said he was working hard today, making a bunch of things.
We made, there are, there's going to be panic winners for that. They'll like say, we're on the canteens. And there'll be a live stream where we are going to get that set up so people can watch.
Awesome. Thanks. Counselor Redd.
This week on Thursday, October twenty sixth, our leadership class has organized a dance at the high school where they have promoted the people to participate in wearing costumes by lowering admission costs for those who choose to wear costume. That's coming up and our teachers have also begun stopping an issue we've been having with vaping in the school by establishing a little station outside bathrooms and just checking in and making sure everything's okay to reduce like amount of issues we've been having recently. So that's good. That's starting to stop and calm down.
Well, awesome. Yeah, that's, that's amazing, if you don't mind me asking. So I didn't realize it was such a problem in the school that they're doing it actually in the school now as well. Wow.
You can get vapes that look like highlighters. So you can just write in class.
Really? And there's no exhaling of anything?
In your sleeve or?
Well, wow, that's, you know, honestly, I mean, you guys are, you know, your peers are there and you may be there, they're doing it, but the reality is that they don't see the health ramifications that it really is having on them. And in the future, it'll be really detrimental to their, to their health.
Yeah, I feel like it hasn't really been, hasn't been like vaping. It hasn't had enough time for like the full studies on it. You don't really know in the long term impacts on it because it's just a recent problem.
Yeah, well, that's, that's bad. And by all means, I would encourage you both to participate in any, anything. There's no stupid question, okay? By all means, if you feel anything you want to ask a question on any one of the reports that we're doing, you'll have an opportunity to see the agenda prior to the meeting. If you feel that there's something on there that you want to ask a question, by all means, just put your hand up and like any other counselors and ask a question because we want you not only to participate from your point of view, from what's happening in your high school world and your youth world, but what's happening in our world. And some of these things might hit a spot that you have some passion about saying, hey, I like that. I'm interested in that. So by all means, just ask the question. Okay? Great. Thanks a lot. And welcome aboard again. Up next, we have Mr. Paris, who's going to give us an overview of the works operations facilities. We are, and of course Pebble Beach in regards to the construction.
Thanks, worship and worship and council. So this is going to be a very quick update on the two projects that we're looking at. I'll start off with the Pebble Beach project, which we'd advised twenty two eleven. Originally, we had construction looking at a completion of October, but we've extended that. It'll be extended till mid-November. So we're looking at November twentieth. Originally, it started September fifteenth, then we looked at October. Now we know for sure we'll be looking November. Several items impacting the delay of that project basically is material procurement shortage. One of the issues is actually the wildfires in B C. And all the large timbers are being used as a priority for hydro poles and utility poles. So we're struggling a bit with getting our timbers put in. So that's one of the issues that we're dealing with right now. So that's what's been delaying us. You know, completion date right now, we're looking at all the civil work is done. So our stormwater management, grading and civil work, the asphalt completed, wooden boardwalk is in. But none of the railing systems are in yet. The concrete stairs, walkways, those are all done. The electrical conduits for future development are installed and all the plumbing and the hose bins are in for warming the plants for the public to take any water. We did add some additional asphalt to the project when we were on site. And I will, Bruno's did have some additional asphalt when they showed up. So there was no additional cost to the town. They, you know, they're always worried when they're hauling asphalt from Thunder Bay, they were actually hauling that from the Red Rock plant. So they, that was, they just incorporated that in the cost of the original design. So that was great news. Some of the remaining work for the Pebble Beach project is the steel brackets are just getting back from being galvanized. It's been a long wait. So once we get those in, the handrails will go in and that's expected to be in by November the tenth. Again, talking about the ten inch ground long tivers for the parking lot barriers. That's the biggest delay right now. And they're looking at being in by, you know, early November. So it's good news. I've been delayed for the project. Then this week, we're looking, depending on weather, it looks like a bit of rain, maybe delayed till next week, but the very free asphalt markings and line painting will take place. Plantings, if you've been by the site, all the plantings are there and on all the, their containers and they'll be planted this week. The exterior finishes, so the couple of rocks for the lower tier precast washroom have arrived. So lower finishings will take place. And the hardened board will be installed and that's to be completed by October thirty first. And then we've got some additional work, which is a bit of a different project, but we're combining it together, which was some signage to be inside and installed for the Lix Spear Circle Tour. That signage has arrived. So we'll have all that in by, you know, mid-November. So council's decision, you know, we were looking at, you know, really a September, October, now or November, which will get a little cold. And if council would prefer, we could look at a grand opening in November or spring, whatever you prefer, we'll take the direction from council. Any questions on the Pebble Beach project?
Yeah, I think that, you know, honestly, with the delays in the project, that it will be more appropriate because, you know, November the fifteenth might roll around, November twentieth might roll around, might have not been product copy and arrive. So we're best to let them get completed this year. And then, of course, when it warms up in the spring and the park could be open to the public.
Absolutely.
Do the actual photo and ribbon cut him to say thank you very much. And then maybe the provincial and federal reps can also attend this spring with much more notice rather than than in November. And I don't, I don't wish anybody stand in the middle of the experience on a hill. November, it's could be a nice day, but it could be a real cool day. But so council's thoughts, council.
Yeah, I think for my part, the spring would be a better opportunity. And what will the date be for the public to have access to site?
So we'll confirm that. So we're looking at November twentieth would be available for the site. If the only major delay in talking to the contractor today, you know, the ten inch log timbers for the traffic barrier, worst case scenario, if they're not in by November fifteenth, they'll put temporary barriers in. So four by four basically won't be as, you know, as cosmetic appealing. But we'll put that in until the spring and then get it finalized. But it will be available for November twentieth.
So that was the only reason really to go grand openings, let public know they can go to the site. But as long as we advertise it, people will be in.
That's right. Spring, spring, yeah, spring, good. Those are Suki. Okay. Do you counsel to give with that?
All right. So we'll make, we'll make some announcements and host and we'll let them know when it's available and then we'll coordinate that after. All right, for the stock with the public works facility project twenty two oh eight. Please to say, I'm going to say the weather has been definitely in our favor. The program, project is on schedule, which is a great, great news for everyone. So we're still looking at a July, August, twenty twenty four completion. Right now, when we look at allowances, you know, we purchased a ten ton company crane. We've got the seventy thousand pound platform lift from Carr and our wash bay equipment, they're all on order. We reviewed shop drawings. They're scheduled for delivery. I believe the lift is on its way from Italy right now overseas. So things are coming and then most of the other equipment is coming from the U S. So things are online there. If you drive around the site, things have really progressed. Always takes long when you're doing footings and the utilities, but now things are starting to look like a building. So the concrete footing is a slab, the exterior aprons for all the garage doors are installed. All the underground mechanical services are in. Steel erection is, which included the precast decking, the open web joists and the can on deck work is to be completed today. So that's great news. Contractor who's subbed up will be leaving today. Interior block wall will continue on. We've done some block wall, which was looking at the precast, was supporting part of the precast in the design. And they'll continue on probably ongoing for another month. Exterior wall construction scheduled for next week. Roofing is to begin the first week in November and C G B's primary goal is really to enclose the building and then run some temporary heat for the winter months and go from there. So I'm just really pleased to say that we're on schedule for that building. The salt shed, which was, we were looking at having installed by November, we've got some delays with the preage building. So that is going to be delayed until spring. We've made arrangements in the public works department where sand building is, we've sort of reconfigured some room in there. We've got a little less sand piled in there, but we can draw from it from a different resource afterwards. So we're going to make it work for this year, a bit more difficult for the public works department. But it's functional. We get by and then next year we'll be okay. So and then I was sort of looking at, once the building is closed, maybe coordinating a quick tour for council if they would like to take a look at the building. So we can, once we get to that date, we can coordinate that a little more. And we'll schedule that underneath the council meeting night. So we don't interrupt too much. Any questions with the public works facility?
So the, I mean, this will be the one year we have to run really without a building because the old one's down. This one isn't quite built. Is there, do you foresee a disruption service?
Well, we know there's going to be some disruption, but we feel we can manage it. We've put some provisions in place. So we've got the waste transfer building is be completed next two weeks. So we've got some storage capacity there for to get us by. We're installing some exterior plugins on the carpenter shed, the, what we call the carpenter shed. Wait by the Shaw building. So we've got some exterior plugins getting put in there right now. So we can keep our block heaters working. So no, we've got our provisions in place and it will be a bit different, but I think we're going to be okay. Great. And we've got our new speed cloud, which really we can send and salt with one vehicle. So we're looking forward to getting that on the road.
Did anybody see the new speed cloud? Like it's amazing what three hundred fifty doesn't get you these days. It's a nice truck, but it's, you can look at the price of the vehicle compared to what you get. Like it's a, it's a multi-use vehicle for sure. Speed cloud, sander, we've got a box, everything, but wow, it's a lot of money.
You know, twenty five hundred series diesel right now, for a hundred and twenty five thousand. You don't get much anymore. Twenty dollars doesn't go anywhere too much.
You get, yeah, you don't get much more than a gallon of gas for twenty.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know. Okay, that's good. Thank you very much, Mr. Paris. Appreciate it. Up next, we have a motion here for the check runs. The following check runs for September twenty twenty three. Be approved for payment. Council payable the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars, eight, three cents. Payable amount of one hundred and ninety four thousand, one hundred and ninety six and fifty nine cents. Move by. I was around six by council. Any questions to those check runs?
The big accounts payable this year. That's, that's, that's more than normal. Lots of building going.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, all in favor? Very, thank you. Okay, I had a. Okay, I had a report verbally on the, as well as Noma Nemo, but I think everybody's got the Noma agenda that we had our meeting. That's what was nicely about it, that everybody just mistook they were doing the same thing. So I'd ask if there's any question, we had an opportunity to look at that. It was pretty straightforward meeting, just follow up from our, our London trip. And of course, all the things we bring to government and what they can and can't do for us. And so we asked them all the time when they leave now. As we all know, there was a bit of a shakeup after we left London with the government. So we haven't received any official letters back from the government in regards to the issue we brought forward. So there was just the report from the Noma board meeting that you all received. And of course, the, the email board that I attended in Toronto last month as well was all around mostly housing. And of course, now with the government, the coming, pulling back on the 1.5 million house scenario, not that they're pulling back on that number, but the reality is where they're going to find the next piece of land to develop. And then, of course, we had received the notification that they were going to give us the small community some of the funding for that. So we'll, we'll access some of those. We don't know the exact number for that, we will be able to get, but it's a, it's a percentage of the overall fund. We'll be coming to small municipalities that are not, don't have a strong Mayor's Act. And you might have been following that our Bay has now in the process of receiving their strong Mayor's Act. And basically what is basically so the mayor, which is a thing we didn't agree with that, that no amo was to have powers beyond the regular run of council and but is around focusing on housing. But that could back where some mayors could take it to the next level, that's always a threat. And so the email was more around that. And of course, it was just a, you know, post the summary of our conference and how everything ran and what we did and what can Aimo improve on in regards to the future ones, which will be in London, or sorry, Ottawa next year. Ottawa or London, I can't remember. Windsor, yeah, Windsor, yeah, we're moving it around, yes, back to Ottawa, three years, two years. So yeah, Windsor next year, so it's going to be even more difficult to get there. Mrs. Korchinsky, Mr. Wheeler had a fun time trying to get. It's weird when you got to the locations that are, so we're, we're asking why doesn't Toronto get back in? So we'll see what comes of that with the new mayor and see if there's some interest. So makes it much more convenient for everybody being that location. But anyway, any questions on any of those? No, okay, all good. Up next, we have new business as regards to the Roma Conference coming up in January, the end of January. I will share that the attendance of the following individual group for the annual rural municipal association Roma Conference is scheduled January 21 to 23 in Toronto. So I need moving to second round for councillor Lakes, councillor Supi, councillor Lake. Interested? Okay, councillor Wheeler?
I'm not 100% sure my risk schedule, but I would like to attend so I can try and make it work.
That's for Sukie. I'll be interested. I'll put your name. Okay. That's your balance?
Unfortunately, I'll be on baby vacation.
Okay, Mayor Dumis and then Mrs. Korchinsky, of course, we'll put there and all in favor? Good, okay, so that they'll be just there and we will confirm with deputy clerk on that for your availability so that we can get registration as appropriate as we need to. And as for student councillors, we will, we'll try to get you set up for the Noma Conference in the spring to attend on behalf of the municipality. And, you know, we can do, and well, we had a presentation presented last year in spring, the first one after the COVID, the pandemic. So it'd be a good opportunity for you to, to expose yourself to the, I was like last year.
We don't like exposing ourselves.
Not, not, not that. You're, you're, you're student world to the fellow councillors and mayors. Last year was quite well attended, it was 230 plus and 10 ministers, which is an unusual thing. But maybe we'll get that again, but I don't know. So something that you can attend to on behalf of the municipality. Okay, anything else? We were, we have some, we were going to go into a camp that's been canceled, then we have some discussions we're going to take place of during our process for budgeting for 2024 right after this public meeting. That council will want to do that, so with all that being said, if there's nothing else. All the journey hour of four, 35pm, move by councillor Lakes, if by councillor Wheeler, all in favor? Great, thank you and have a good night up there.